All right, thank you, Grace, and again, welcome. My little notes here. Welcome, everyone, to this fabulous, what do we call it? As I said earlier, community meeting to really explain to the community our West Power Complex at Sewardian Waterboard of New Orleans. Again, I'm Ron Spooner, the interim general superintendent of SWIVNO, and have our team. And when I say "our" team, it's a partnership between SWIVNO as well as Entergy New Orleans, a collaborative effort in constructing this West Power Complex. So, quick things I want to note before we get too far is that if you have any, there's some questions, question cards, I call them. So if you have a question, please fill out the card, raise your hand, someone will come around and pick up the question. So we will do the Q and A session after our brief presentation, which is about 10, 15 minutes at the most. So, and to my left, the two project managers will come up and do that. So, again, what is the West Power Complex? You know, and one of the things, it's, one is a transformational project. The West Power Complex really is part one of our overall Sewardian Waterboard Power Master Plan. So you may ask, what is that Power Master Plan? Again, part one of the Power Master Plan is the West Power Complex, which really will explain that in detail with our PMs of literally building a new power plant consisting of a new complex consisting of two parts. One is the new Entergy substation, really so we can get that reliable energy from that hardened transmission grid itself. And the blessing that we have at SWIVNO is that we have that transmission line right along the Monticello. So that is really advantageous to SWIVNO on the West Power Complex, number one. And then, number two, from Sewardian Waterboard's standpoint of view is to, oh, that's right, I'm going too fast, we've got to crank up the power presentation, is the brand-new, state-of-the-art backup secondary power plant. And that's one of the key things that is also an integral part of the West Power Complex is that new power plant we have. The original power plant, you know, was really been there since the early 1920s. So we have the citizens, and then we say "we," the citizens of the city has really gotten their money out of that existing power plant, and now we're heading over to the West Power Complex. So I just wanted to mention that with the West Power Complex. The second part of the Power Master Plan, I would say, is really what I call part two. And that's really converting its seven or eight original drainage pumping stations at SWIVNO, where we have the 25 Hz equipment in addition to the 60 Hz, but that 25 Hz equipment has been there a long time. And that second part is really converting those pump stations, that equipment, up to 60 Hz. That is really the more complicated part of the overall Power Master Plan, and it's really funding-dependent, so funding is not there at this point in time. So some of the quick things we're going to have is that, what are the benefits? Many of you may or may not know, but this facility, the West Power Complex, again, we're converting, we're actually going to buy electricity from the grid from Entergy. You know, we're not in the business anymore of SWIVNO like we were in 1920s, and I'll ad lib a little bit till they get the electronics going. But again, a quick history, 1896, 1896, the Drainage Commission was established with Sewardian Waterboard. In 1899, the Sew and Water came through via the state legislature, and then in 1903, it merged. That's how we came to the Sewardian Waterboard of New Orleans. So again, back then, in the early 1900s, 25 Hz was the power source that was selected in order for our pump station. That's pretty much where we are at this point in time. So again, this, the benefits here of the West Power Complex, one, we're buying electricity from Entergy, it's more economical, and again, we're building our secondary backup power plant. So, so they say, give them a second, so we can definitely do that. Show of hands, any members of the community, live around the area? I mean, that's, thank you for coming out, glad you can come out, without a doubt. Some of the benefits, it benefits both Jefferson Parish as well as Orleans Parish. So this West Power Complex will supply power to half of our pump stations, what we call Old City Drainage Area, our largest drainage pump station, which is DPS 6. So if you don't know, we actually do service both sides of the parish. The Sewardian Waterboard is for us a drainage area. So again, approximately 2,600 acres, we actually service that drainage area from Jefferson Parish that does drain to DPS 6 via Hoyes Basin, and the remainder comes from a large portion of the uptown area. So, so again, this is what, do my little, here, again, quick thing, introductions, did a little bit on a project overview, what we're going to do tonight. The team, and the team to the left, and I may as well introduce them now. I do, from Sewardian Waterboard, our SWIVNO's program manager, Caitlin Timmerich. She's our program manager for this project, the West Power Complex. And from Entergy itself, Mario Saraballo. He is actually the program manager on Entergy's side. So again, it's a team effort, without a doubt, on this project here. So again, they will get into the current status, the next steps, as well as a discussion. So again, if you have any questions, fill out the card. We'll definitely go over the questions at the end. We'll definitely have a question and answer session to answer any and all of your concerns relative to this project. So without me stonewalling any further, let's bring up Caitlin Timmerich, as well as Mario Saraballo, who will go into the details relative to the West Power Complex. Thank you.
All right, I have to do my adjustments here. How's that? Okay, great. All right, so as Ron mentioned, the West Power Complex really is a game changer for our utility, our customers, and, you know, the city in general. We do recognize, however, that it's going to have some impacts on you as our neighbors, and that's what we want to talk about here today. So just to go over a brief overview of what the complex itself will include, there is a lot of moving parts to this, but we're really breaking it down into three major components. So the first being the substation, which, you know, will be constructed and operated by Entergy. That will allow us to, oops, this is falling, excuse me, draw power directly from the transmission grid for our use and dedicated for our use. The next major component is the frequency changers, which will allow us to take the 60 Hz power from Entergy and convert it to 25 Hz for our use. So if you're not already familiar, many of our drainage pumps, about half of them, utilize 25 Hz power, which is not common anymore. And so we either need to generate that ourselves, which is what we presently do via our existing power infrastructure, or take that from Entergy or utility provider and convert that for our use. So that's the second major component. And then the third major component, as Ron alluded to, are new backup turbine generators. And so what those would be used for would be to supplement power from Entergy in case that was never needed for any particular reason. So just to orient everybody on the location of this project and where the impacted neighbors, or the impacts to the neighborhood. So this is, this work is occurring right on the border of the Jefferson Parish and Orleans Parish border. Work will occur along Monticello Avenue that will be part of Entergy's project, and we'll have them speak to that in a moment. The majority of the work that SWIVNO is doing is within our existing facility. So the West Power Complex, as its name implies, is on the west side of the facility. And the majority of the rest of our power distribution equipment and power generation is on the east side. And so it's denoted by the central control box here, or icon. And so another major component of this is, in addition to the substation and frequency changers, is connecting these two sides of the campus. And so we need to be able to get the power from the West Power Complex to where it can be distributed via our existing feeders and other infrastructure to central control. So, well, the utility rack is one of the first things we're going to start constructing, and we'll talk about that in a little bit more detail. Okay, so this, what you're seeing here on the screen is a snapshot of a 3D model of what this will look like in the future. We do have this on one of the boards up here. So trying to give folks a sense of the scale and magnitude of this project. Just to orient a little bit, you see Monticello Avenue, kind of there on the, running this way, and then Claiborne is not on there, but it's, it would be more on the top. So, this keeps falling, my apologies. So the substation will be constructed, constructed on the top side, thank you. And then the Sewardian Waterboard infrastructure is there on the bottom. So that's, that's, to denote, the substation is not a 2D structure. It's just that's how we have it in this model. It will, in fact, be above the ground and have elevation to it like you see the other things. So just kind of following the flow of electricity here, taking it from the substation, routing it through underground duct bank and through cables into frequency changers. There's other equipment that we need in order for all of this to work together. And then that is routed back across feeders that will be across the overhead utility rack. Other equipment, such as transformers, we, Turban 7 is also shown on this, the location of that turbine, which would be the first of the new three that we plan on buying. And there is a note on there, on the foundation for the operation center. At this time, we will be constructing that foundation with the anticipation of having the operation center built in the future, but we do not need that at this specific time in order to be able to take the power from Entergy and convert it and use it for our needs. So the current status of the overall project. We're here today because we are about to get started. The site is ready for construction. That's the photo you see on the bottom of the page. Doesn't look like much right now. You can see the ground storage tanks there in the background. Those are what you would see from Claiborne Avenue at this time. And, but in a couple of weeks, we'll be starting to bring in equipment and materials, and we're truly going to get going. So here's a timeline of the anticipated construction. I'm going to hand it over to Mario with Entergy. They're going to be getting started first, so he'll explain some of that timeline.
Thank you, Caitlin. As I was introduced, I'm Mario Saraballo, the Entergy project manager. So our team, working in conjunction with SWIVNO, will be building the dedicated substation that's going to be called Sullivan. So that is going to be built inside the West Power Complex, as she showed on the map. But as Ron mentioned, fortunately, there is a dedicated, there is a 230 KV or 230,000 volt transmission line that runs directly outside of the plant, right on the parish line along Monticello Avenue. So that is going to be the source of the grid power that will be the primary source of power to the West Power Complex. So the substation will be built on the site on the north end of the West Power Complex. It will tie into that transmission line just outside of the, just outside of the plant property, on the other side of the levee. Now, the way we do that is we're basically doing what we call the cut-in. So we're basically going to take, when we're done with that tie-in, we'll take a feed from two different directions. So this will be a very reliable and redundant substation. It will take power from the existing substation to the north called Joliet, which is in the middle of the city off of Earhart, and it'll also take a source from the Southport Substation, which is down close to the river, close to the southern end of Monticello. So we will have two different potential sources for the substation. Now, as part of this project, as was mentioned, we are going to have to do some work along Monticello, and there's two reasons for that. We're going to have to install structures and wires to tie the substation into that existing transmission line, but we also need to increase the capacity of the source from our Southport Substation to the south. What that means is, we're going to have to replace the wires on that, those structures with wires that are of a different type, a different technology, and a much higher capacity. Once we do that, then we'll be able to ensure that even if the feed from one or the other substations were to go out in the future, we would still be able to adequately provide the peak power load for SWIVNO, you know, during a heavy drainage event from either source. And as far as our timeline, as I mentioned, we're going to be the first ones out of the gates, so to speak. So our current plan is to actually start construction, foundation construction, driving pilings a couple of weeks from now. So our, one of our contractors that is designated for that task, Patriot, will be mobilizing on the 5th of December. So that's going to be the first area, as we're talking about impacts to the community, the first time you'll hear some, people will see some noise and see some activity out there at the West Power Complex. They'll be taking delivery of concrete piles in the dedicated entrance that'll come off of Claiborne, right next to the, you know, the tie-in to Monticello. So you'll start seeing some truck traffic there. You'll start hearing some pile-driving equipment being set up, and then we'll be driving piles over the course of two to three months. And that'll just be during normal daytime hours. So that's really the first big impact. For our construction will be continuing, though, for the remaining, remainder of 2023 and into the first quarter of '24. So you'll see some equipment deliveries. We'll have some other, you know, activities that will make some noise. But the pile-driving, really off the bat, is going to be really the first thing the community is going to hear, particularly on the Jefferson Parish side, you know, where the West Power Complex is facing. And then finally, we'll be, not finally, but where, when we're talking about doing the transmission work, that work out on Monticello will start in May. So in May, we're going to be also making some additional contacts to the community, particularly on the Jefferson Parish side that faces Monticello, letting them know that we're going to be implementing some traffic controls. We'll have to do some lane closures and road closures as we install the structures and start setting up to restring wires down Monticello. So that'll be the next impact, and that's where we talk about doing the transmission work between April and June. And then finally, when the substation's done being built and we're ready to commission it, as we say, and put it in service, we'll be back out briefly on Monticello to do a little bit more transmission line work to string the wires into the station. So those, and that's really kind of encompasses our entire timeline, starting in December of this year and finishing roughly in the January, February of 2024 timeframe. Thanks.
Great, thanks, Mario. So in terms of the Sewardian Waterboard construction timeline, it's going to overlap Entergy's work as well. So our contractors will, we are beginning to mobilize in November, and we will start the more dedicated pile-driving in early January of next year. And so 2023 and 2024 are going to be very big years. We'll be doing a lot of pile-driving, civil excavation and work. All of the equipment that we need needs a, needs a foundation to go on. And so those foundations will be being built. Just to go back, the utility rack, actually, is the first thing that we'll get started with, and that's what the piles that we'll be starting with in January are for. So that work will get kicked off, then we'll be, then we will begin our civil foundation work. The equipment will, is presently in manufacturing, quite a bit of it is, and so we'll be receiving those deliveries over the course of the next two years as they come through. And then we'll be tying everything together and commissioning all of that by the end of 2024. So in terms of the impacts to our neighbors and the community, certainly traffic control, which Mario just mentioned, along Monticello Avenue, as needed. Claiborne Avenue, we, the majority of those impacts will be construction, equipment, more vehicles coming through there. I know that's not new to anybody who's already living in the area. Everybody's already used to quite a bit of construction in this, around this facility. We do have a dedicated construction entrance, and on occasion, we will need to receive large loads of equipment that's coming from around the country, and we'll have to appropriately address traffic at that time. Certainly vibration, pile-driving is, would be a concern. We do have specifications in our contracts with our contractors of limits they're required to meet to minimize our impact. And then, and then noise, of course. So pile-driving, the other equipment, and just general in that area. The planned working hours at this time are Monday through Friday, 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Saturday work is presently planned, based on contractor's schedule. No work is planned on Sunday or on holidays. However, I just want to know that there may be times when large equipment needs to come in, that may need to be scheduled different times of day, and, you know, we, as soon as we know something, we'll communicate that out to our neighbors to let everybody know that that's going to be coming, if there's any sort of unusual, unusual sort of situation associated with that. Let me just make sure I got all of my notes on that one. So just going back to the impacted areas slide, now we've talked about this a little bit. So again, the work on the west side of our campus, there at the corner of Claiborne Avenue and Monticello Streets, or Monticello Avenue, and all of the work going on in our plant. Okay, I think we slipped to the next, next. Okay, so in terms of more information, any impacts to you during the construction? We do have a hotline number set up for this work. That information is there, as well as an email that you can email, and we'll get back to you as soon as possible on that. And then Entergy has also set up dedicated contact information. So this is, I believe, on your handout, I believe. And so if you've, if you already have, I see lots of people writing. If you already have the handout, it's there, and we'll be posting that on our website, I believe. So all of that will be available for you. Okay, and I think this is where we move into the Q and A session. So, thank you. Oh, can we go back? Yeah, perfect, of course.
All right, thank you, thank you, Caitlin, thank you, Mario, as well as thank you, Ciara. So, do you have any questions? Any cards? We'll come pick them up. And we actually... Yeah, you sure could, you sure could. Look, I mean, that is correct, and then the other, and we'll probably still ask you to write it down because we keep the cards for the files. So, Entergy, okay?
Yes, that's correct. It's pulling power from the 230 KV transmission line that ties into Joliet Substation and Southport Substation. Right. That's correct, and of course, this is part of the transmission grid. We'll upgrade the transmission line between Sullivan and Southport, that's correct. The other one already has adequate capacity. And now, of course, it's not just the substation supplying it. Each of those substations in turn, because this is part of a wider grid, takes power sources, right? Southport takes power from the Nine Mile Power Plant across the river, as well as several other substations. So they're all tied back into the greater grid. Joliet, in turn, that's a sort of a daisy chain of substations. Joliet Substation then takes its power from what's called Midtown Substation. It's one of the big ones you see from the highway as you're going down the Crescent City Connector, and that in turn ties to another substation. It goes all the way back to, back to our Meishu Switchyard, back where New Orleans' power station's at.
So essentially, you've got power coming into Sullivan from two different sides of the street.
That's correct. That's the idea. Right, exactly. And there is other redundancy built into the substation itself. It has redundant transformers, it has redundant fiber-optic communications. The feeders between us, the 24,000 volt feeders between us and SWIVNO are also redundant. Either one of those will be able to handle the entire feed. So we've worked together on this whole project to build the redundancy all the way back from the West Power Complex, all the way back into the grid. So we're trying to make it to where if any one thing goes out, the, we've got a backup. Sure.
All right, catch you down the way down, catch you afterwards. Yep, yes, sir, go ahead.
I predicted in the 90s that it was going to happen, because it discharged some gas, and it happened a couple of years ago, it had the explosion, Sewardian Waterboard had the explosion. It still had the crack in it, but I found a property access one block from the plant on Corn Street in Monroe. So actually, I was in DC by too much of a seat. Troy Carter, and my concern is the noise, and my other concern is, why haven't Sewardian Waterboard put a wall, a barrier wall around the whole plant? Because it's potential, it's really a potential chemical plant within the town community. Because, number one, explosion. Number two, because of the water, a lot of water. Is this plant for Entergy, is it going to be a lot of noise? Because right now, there's noise.
Good question, very good question. One, two, you are correct. Relative to the wall you're talking about, and that's with Turban 5, and he is referencing the explosion a couple of years ago? With the exhaust stack with Turban 5, we resolved most of that. We did look at, with our engineering firms, a study of the wall. One of the areas where we did is the West Power Complex, and we resolved that. Because the point of the West Power Complex is, is one, when we buy, when we buy electricity from Entergy off the grid, there's no need for us to operate our turbines to generate power 24 hours a day, seven days a week. That is really the key component of the West Power Complex. So you, you will not hear T5 or T4. Part of that is with the West Power Complex, we've talked a little bit, we may have heard say T6, T7. But if we get additional funding, I always want to say with additional funding, to get it completely built out with T8 as well as T9, that secondary backup power plant will, in essence, replace the existing power plant at the Carrollton Water Plant in which you see right now. And the goal is to decommission and mothball T4 as well as T5. So we are, when we say transitioning, and again, funding-independent, we're transitioning to the new power plant, the new complex, consisting of a, of a substation and then the backup power plant. We always need that backup power plant, no matter what, in order for us to stay in island mode. So that is just, it's a twofold, your question is too far, I just want to answer it both ways. To say that is really one of the main purposes why we're building the West Power Complex, because it is to replace the existing power plant and accept a new substation, as well as a new power plant that can last us, function for another 100 years.
Right, I appreciate that. Also, they have the levee on Monticello side, which was built years ago. But actually, it's, there's no water behind it.
At this, that is correct.
And so actually, it was really for water to contain.
You, you, that's a very important point, because the Monticello levee in the late 1800s, again, when New Orleans was there, and then the city of Carrollton at that time, on the backside of that, it was a swamp. So really, that's what that, that levee was. Hurricane, it was a protection levee at that time. But, but again, that levee is just a levee, it's just, it's just a barrier. It, it... Uh-huh. Right. Well, and let me say this, I think part of, when we go into the West Power Complex, there's no need for that wall anymore. You know, or the concept of a wall, because you're not mitigating that noise from the existing turbines what we have now. Again, the new West Power Complex, buying, you know, utilizing the substation from the transmission power to power the Carrollton Water Complex is really where we are right now. Again, we are getting out of the daily power generation business, which was the original concept of SWIVNO at that plant, and then going to our concept, what we use, say, like at our drainage pump station in New Orleans East. Although we have a backup generation, we get all of our power from the grid. Okay, and let me get her, she had a question, I guess, ma'am?
Grace asked me to use the microphone with my voice.
We can hear you nicely, yes, ma'am?
So, full disclosure, I am a vendor for Entergy. I sell products to support substations and distribution products. But during the presentation, the overview said that cleaner and cheaper power will be offered with this improvement. Maybe you can define what is it cleaner and cheaper than? Like, what is the value now going to be? How is it going to be cleaner and cheaper?
Go ahead.
And before I answer that, let me, I think there was one last little piece that maybe didn't get totally answered, and I want to make sure you understand. The substation itself is essentially silent. You know, because I think you kind of had asked about that. So obviously, the generation is noisy, and the generation, as Ron mentioned, will run only very, very, very infrequently when the substation is down or it needs to supplement the power. The substation itself is silent, it is getting its power generation from remote sources.
Yeah, by my experience, actually, with projects, I've been with every project, Sewardian Waterboard, it's more than that. The parents, that it didn't change, makes sense.
Got you. Thank you, I just wanted to close the loop on that. So, so I can't directly quantify that, but I can tell you qualitatively, I think, to really answer your question. And it's, it really comes down to a lot to taking older, small, localized, inefficient generation, which is really what SWIVNO has right now, right? You know, steam turbines, old gas turbine, only one newer generation gas turbine at that plant, and basically tying into the grid where the opportunities, then, then it just comes down to where is that power coming from, correct? It's either coming from, it's coming from a mix of, and that just gets back to a totally different question of, it's coming from a mix of fossil fuel generation, renewable generation, what have you. So the idea is, once you get away from local, local generation, which you don't have any choice but to deal with the efficiency of that, the source of the fuel of that, and you get to the grid where it's going to be able to be powered from larger, much more, just in general, even the fossil generation, in a much, much larger scale, our new power plants, like Nine Mile, six across the river, supply, can, can easily supply much more efficient and inexpensive power. Again, I can't quantify that, I can get you to people that can. But, and that's going to be a changing picture, right? As we add renewables to our portfolio, as we... As we add renewables to our portfolio, as we continue to retire our old generation and put new generation in, that power will become more and more economic and cleaner, more great. Understood, certainly. Thank you.
The pile driving timeline in the PowerPoint is very unclear. I live on the Jefferson Parish line with the plant. Is it from December to February, or is it all the way through 2023? That we'll be experiencing the impacts of that pile driving?
Yes, so as Mario mentioned, when Entergy's contract come in, I'll let him expound on that. Their timeline of pile driving for their substation section, but also, before I bring him up, Swivno will also be driving piles. Our first set of piles we're going to be driving is for the utility rack. It's pretty, and that first board right behind Grace, Grace had pointed out right there. All of our pile driving activities will be within the plant itself. But Swivno, yes, we will be driving pile, driving steel piles for the utility rack starting in January, and that will go on, once we have our other civil contracts with the foundation, in order to construct the foundations. Those pile driving activities will start right around the June, July timeframe, and the rest, yes, will take us pretty much through the end of 2023. So again, that is the noisiest part, I would say, of this project itself, is driving the piles. And that timeline, it's a tight timeline to get in, but from January, we will start driving piles, and I'll let Mario explain if he has a few minutes on driving piles for Entergy.
Thanks, Ron. Ron covered most of it. You know, the only difference between ours, ours is a shorter duration. We're going to be driving concrete piles from December through February, and they're going to be working, we're meeting with them in a couple of weeks to see if we can tighten up that schedule a little bit, if possible. But those piles will be inside the substation, just like a lot of the ones for the Swivno portion of the West Power Complex. You know, we're hopeful, obviously, that the berm and the distance from the residence will attenuate a lot of the sound. You know, as Caitlin also mentioned, we're only doing that during daytime, weekday hours. You know, there's no intent to do any off-hours, pile driving certainly not on our part. I did mention, we are putting a couple of, four transmission structures in also, but that literally is only four foundations, and those will go in in the course of just a few days. Two of them will be out on Monticello, and two of them will be just on the other side of the berm. So really, for us, the noise impact will be that two-and-a-half to three-month period when we're driving concrete piles. Yeah, so the question is, are we going to have a visual, or really a noise barrier on Monticello? That is, I will ask that question, and that is going to be, that's certainly something. And Bradley Verrett here, who is also our point of contact, that we've got in the notes, Bradley is also on our construction team, so he's going to be able to address things both from a landowner interface standpoint and a construction standpoint. So we'll go ahead and follow up on that with our piling subcontractor. But as far as doing anything on Monticello, like I alluded to before, one advantage of where the power complex is at, you know, it's up higher, and you've got a berm in between the two, so you have a visual and somewhat of a noise abatement barrier, really, by nature. If it turns out that's not adequate, and there are some measures that we can take to help appease any concerns of the excessive noise during the day, we'll try to address those. But I will ask, we'll ask a question about localized, you know, sound barriers around the pile driving.
Will you be conducting any adjacent property assessment, given that this project does involve a lot of vibration?
The vibrations at the West Power Complex, our engineering team believes that, given the distance, the vibrations will be more than attenuated before they get anywhere, you know, meaning that they will basically dissipate before they get into the local residence. The actually, the only place where we're going to be closer to the residence is the two large, what we call vibratory caisson foundations, we're going to install for those structures on Monticello, where we basically take the existing line and tie it into the substation. Those will go in literally in the course of a couple of days. During that time, we'll be a little closer to the houses across the street, and at that point in time, we'll be doing some vibration monitoring, and Bradley and be in close touch with the circle of nearby residents, letting them know when that's going to happen. And we'll have folks out there to address any concerns if they come up, so. But in general, our experience, particularly with those vibratory piles, it's basically kind of a high-frequency vibration. They go down literally in the course of an hour or two. Sometimes, if the soil's soft enough, the foundation's installed in like a half hour. So even sometimes 10, 20, 30 feet away, you won't even feel the vibrations on the ground, so. But we'll be ready to address those comments or concerns immediately after our construction starts, if anybody, you know, does notice some bigger impacts of noise or visual and anything than we anticipated. Thanks.
Thank you, Mario. Okay, one more question? Repeat the question.
Turbines, you're putting turbines in as well?
Absolutely. So our question was, are we putting, are turbines part of the project? Yes, it is.
So T7, right?
T7, that's correct.
So T7 is run not by electrical power, but by natural gas?
T7, T7 is dual fuel. T7 will be ran by natural gas, as well as fuel, diesel fuel is needed, if needed, that's correct. So it's a dual-fuel machine, that's correct.
But the turbines are a backup to Entergy?
That's correct. So the turbines will allow Swivno to operate in island mode. And that is really a key aspect, I've said earlier, I could have said it fast, too fast, but that is one of the key aspects of Sewardian Waterway as a utility. We have to, no matter what, operate in island mode. And the case in point was, it's a blessing we had no hurricanes this season, I'm glad, but in 2021, Hurricane Ida, how we made it at Swivno, we operated without turbines. And so this is pretty much the exact same concept. Anything happens, just like at your home, if something happened, if you have a backup generator, if you have solar panels, that is that backup power source that you're utilizing at your home for your backup generation. And this West Power Complex, that secondary backup power plant, will be our backup power source in the event that it's needed. Not just with storms, if there's downtime with Entergy, they would definitely notify us, but that's the reason why we have to have that backup power plant. So we have to have island, we're in island mode, to have that power to keep us operational no matter what.
So can T7 run the whole show?
No, absolutely, very good question. That is a very good question. No, T7 cannot run the whole show. That's part of the reason why we have the existing T6, as well as T7, and we still have the existing T5. If funding becomes available, and we are looking for funding all the time, the full buildout is three new turbines, T8 and T9. So what that gives us is three turbines plus one in the queue, or backup of redundancy. So the full buildout, again, depending upon funding, the existing T6 and 7, 8, 9, but currently, what's going, what we have in the queue now is T6 and T7, which we can also supplement that with T5 if need be, to meet that requirement. Yes. Yes? It is functional. We don't run it every day, but T5 is functional. That is correct.
And so, do you need 5, 6, and 7 in order to run the whole show?
You really need, I would say, two-and-a-half turbines. And that's really if all of our electricity demand is needed with a rainstorm, without a doubt. Case in point, normally, we do run two turbines. Right now, we have T4, T5, but we also have the EMDs. We actually run two turbines that we have, because we split the bus. Part of it is that we, the last rainstorm, we split the bus. We had about 10 to 12 megawatts on both turbines, maybe four on one, eight on the other, but that's how we split the bus. To answer your question relative to the West Power Complex, we will potentially operate, if needed, in that way. But the luxury, as I've said earlier, the West Power Complex, is we getting the electricity right off that 230 KV line. Swivno, Sewardian Waterway, right now, we're not in the business as we were in 1920, where we had to generate our own power to run our own drainage pumping station. That is the huge difference right now. And to answer, I think Ms. Jill, I remember naming from earlier, is that because of the age of our equipment, our old boilers, we have six boilers, three of them from the old side from 1920s, those are the old ones, and what we call the new side, they're from the 1940s. So again, Ben's laughing, they're inefficient. That's why this West Power Complex is transformational for Swivno, because we can buy the power, we're not in the business to generate power to compete with Entergy. So we'll buy from Entergy, because in reality, it's cheaper for us to buy from Entergy than to generate with our old equipment that is inefficient. And that is where we're headed with the West Power Complex. So our bread and butter is water, sewage, and drainage, and that power component which we need, a small portion of it, and then the rest is backup. So that's really the key for us, to transition to the West Power Complex. You know, buy it from the customer, who that's their bread and butter, and then we're asking our customers, the citizens, you know, we buy water, sewer, drainage, that's what we're here to do. So that's correct. I would say when 7, it's not up until 7 is running, it's when that electrical substation comes online, that is the key. Okay? Because again, what we're going to do, well, no, no, the substation will be our primary source now, and it won't be a T4 or a T5. So that is really the key component of this West Power Complex. And then the gentleman there, that's where you won't hear that noise anymore, unless we, we still have to crank up our generators every other week, we have to test run them, but you won't hear that 24 hours a day, seven days a week, because we're buying that electricity off of the grid. Yep? Okay. Yes, sir?
Yeah, by my experience, actually being in the city with the hurricanes, because I'm always on call, so the, this new complex, would it be, I mean, like you say, it's about the backup for the new complex, would y'all have, do we have a drainage component that's be connected to the?
Very good question. These are good questions. That won't go away. The nerve center for the Carrollton Water Plant is what we call our central control facility. That's the heart and soul of the plant. This West Power Complex, yes, will accept power from Entergy via their electrical substation, and this first poster right there at the beginning, that utility rack, we have to transport that power to what we call our east campus, the east side of the complex, that's the nerve center of central control. That is the heart of how we distribute that power to all of our existing drainage pumping stations, as well as some of our water facilities, and then one sewage pumping station, which is adjacent to municipal auditorium. Well, we still have two 25-hertz sewer pumps that we still operate. So again, we're building it on the west campus, because that's the only space we have left that we can fit. But we're going to transport all that power back into our nerve center, which is central control. And that is the heart and soul of the Sewardian Waterway. It's a very little, small building, some of you may have seen it, it looks like a little supersized garage, but that is the most important facility on that campus, without a doubt. And that is sort of like a huge switchgear. You know, your electrical panel at your home, that's what that is. That's how we disperse that power out to our facilities that depend upon the power generated at the Carrollton Water Plant to keep those drainage pumping stations running. Very good question.
This is all of the rest, that half is all of the remaining, correct?
No, when I say, very good question. What she said, powering half of the pumping station, that came from me when I said that. Of our major pumping stations, half of them still depend upon 25-hertz power, which we generate at the Carrollton Water Plant. So that's when I made that comment, is that the West Power Complex, we're not changing anything relative to the drainage pumping stations and the systems itself, it's just that we are, I would say, we are upgrading our electrical controls at the Carrollton Water Plant, which is a key component, still tying that power into our, into the central control facility, which is really the key, so we can power the existing drainage pumping stations. Now, what I said earlier on relative to the power master plan, which is key, because the West Power Complex, I said, is part one of the power master plan. If funding was not an option, I always got to say if funding was not an option, the goal is to convert the 25-hertz equipment at our existing drainage pumping stations and the one sewer pumping stations to 60 hertz. And again, we're converting that equipment from old to new, we would still utilize the West Power Complex, because one of the key components of the West Power Complex, right now, we're converting, someone say, modern-day power to the 25-hertz power, and again, 25-hertz power is not ancient, because they still use them on the transit system on the east coast. I just wanted, wanted to do that, but the predominant power source now is 60 hertz in America. Once we convert the equipment at the drainage pumping stations to 60, then we won't need the static frequency converters. The whole point of static frequency converters is to convert the modern-day power to the quote-unquote "old" power, to keep the existing facilities up and running until such time that funding becomes available, that we can upgrade and modernize that drainage equipment at those drainage pumping stations. Yes.
Right, but the power that's kind of come from this new Entergy substation is going to power the other half of the pumps that are not already on Entergy power, is that correct?
It's going to power not the other half, but the same 25-hertz pumps that currently receives its power from the plant that we generate. Those other pumps are 60 hertz.
And they're already getting their power?
They get power directly from the grid, some adjacent to those drainage pumping stations. Very good question.
Right, so by the time you're done with this, everything will be on Entergy pump?
No. Well, yes, I would say yes, being a static frequency converter, is very good. Yes, absolutely correct. That is correct.
Okay, that was my question.
That is correct. These are very good questions. And that's the whole point, what I will hear, is from Sewardian Waterway's standpoint of view, want to explain the project, to answer whatever questions she may have, and again, what I would, you know, saying is, we are, some people say, yeah, we're a little bit behind eight ball, you know, but we're trying to catch up. You know, without a doubt, we're trying to catch up, but again, that funding component is really key, in order for us to catch up. Infrastructure, no matter if it's in New Orleans, Jefferson Parish, or the nation as a whole, there is a need to improve our infrastructure, without a doubt. You know, we always hear bridges falling down, roads crumbling, we heard it Jackson, Mississippi with the utilities, but again, the overall theme is improving our infrastructure. But there's also, I would say, at the global level, it's always that lack of adequate funding in order to properly upgrade and improve our infrastructure. So very good questions, without a doubt, very good. Okay, any other questions? Yes? Yes, ma'am? Central controls will get upgrades internal to that, relative to the electronic controls. Some of the equipment in central control will have to be upgraded in order to integrate, properly integrate with the components in the West Power Complex. So again, and where Grace is, where Grace is, very good, I'll talk a little bit about that. You know, so the existing central control is in the middle of the plant, but once we have full buildout, we're going to have a state-of-the-art operations center. And again, where she is, that state-of-the-art operations center will be totally automated, where we can automate all of our, I would say, systems and controls that's coming in right now. So that is really part of the upgrades we're doing to this plant. But it is, at this point in time, it's unfunded, but we're still looking for funding to complete that one portion.
But the reason why I ask this question is because this project is about feeding the equipment. The existing equipment, which does drainage?
That's correct.
Or anything else? Is still the same old equipment, it's always been. The only thing that's changing with this project is the capacity to feed it power.
Uh, we're chang, I would, we say capacity, what's changing is the primary source of power to feed the equipment. Currently, the primary source is with Swebno's power generation facility, but once this project is done, our primary source will be from Entergy.
So pumps are all going to stay the same?
Absol-
Eventually, we won't have all those turbines that need to run the pumps, right?
You won't have the turbines that run 24 hours a day, seven days a week. That is correct. Because we're buying, we are purchasing electricity from Entergy.
Right, but the things that actually move along?
They will stay the same.
They're the same old things we've always had?
They're the same old things until a new source of funding comes in and we can upgrade those pumps you're talking about.
Making sure.
Absolutely correct. Absolutely. Now, what she's saying, the potable water pumps, very good question there. What you see, the work going on in front of Clayburn Station, that is upgrading of a potable water pumps. So again, if we're looking at programs, what programs are we doing? We're talking about the West Power Complex? That is one program we're doing. What you see right now that's happening in front of the Clayburn Station is, one, it's our water hammer program where we're upgrading our potable water system. So that's, that's the program there. Uh, many of you, many, and, and the gentleman in the back mentioned, SEALA, SEALA is our biggest program relative to drainage, but that is upgrading components of the drainage system relative to conveying the water from the, the street, the large canal to the drainage pumping stations. You know, so again, you know, large programs that are happening at Swebno, our sewer program with SERP, many of you know with the consent decree, we're upgrading aspects of our sewer program, but this is one of our programs that we're glad to have in the queue, because it's the power component that people really don't realize, uh, that we operate. We make, we operate, maintain. So I would say we operate four systems at Swebno. Sewer, water, and drain, everyone knows, but this power component, uh, is a very, is another important system that we, we, we have to operate at Swebno. So very good. Okay? These are very good questions. Any other questions, comments, or, or feedback? Okay, yeah, one more, yeah?
Yeah, so when, would it be the next town hall meeting?
You know, someone asked that question earlier? And I, and I would say probably late spring, early summer. You know, we'll try and have another one. Part of that is because then there will be construction activities going on. So, you know, maybe, uh, right before hurricane season? You know, May, June timeframe, uh, we'll try and see if we can have another community meeting. And, and that will be an update meeting, uh, relative to the West Power Complex. So we, you know, a good question, we annotated those notes and hopefully in another six or seven months, we'll be back. All right. One last thing, if you have any billing questions relative to your bill, uh, we have our wonderful customer service team in the back to answer any and all of your billing questions. So they're here to help you, they can log into the system, uh, look up your information. They have their laptops, they're ready to work, but, um, if we don't have any other further questions or comments, first of all, thank you for coming out. One, there we go, one more, okay? Oh, she's writing that one down, absolutely.
Can you all provide a map, an illustration of existing infrastructure, power generating infrastructure, whether they're turbines or whatever else you got distributed around the city, that is, that are going to be eliminated as a result of this project going in?
We can do that, working with our communications department, but just to let you know, all of our power generating facilities, uh, equipment is located at the Carrollton Water Plant. So just to let you know right now, and, and I'll answer part of that, is we've already, the last two years, decommissioned turbine one, which was, um, our small steam turbine right at six megawatts. And about two years ago, we decommissioned turbine three, which was, uh, another, uh, it was, it's a small compared to Entergy's turbine, but it's a 15-megawatt steam turbine. Uh, once we, um, decided to go toward the West Power Complex route, then we started decommissioning those, those, uh, those turbines and to reallocate and focus that money into a new system. So, so again, the two turbines we have online now are T4, which is steam, T5, and then we have a backup to the backup are the EMDs. Those are the ones everyone says are very noisy, uh, that they are noisy, but the fact is that once we transition to the West Power Complex and hopefully get that additional funding for eight, nine, then the existing power generation facilities will be decommissioned, mothballs, scrapped, and we will repurpose, uh, those facilities, uh, in, in the future.
So last question, is any natural gas will be in the facility?
Uh, we have, the facility is fed by natural gas right now. The new, uh, turbines we're putting in will be operated by natural gas and when we say dual fuel, by, uh, by, by diesel. So, so that, that is the, uh, I would say, the part of, the meat, the fuel for those new turbines is natural gas as well as diesel fuel. That's correct.
And that's why I say that it's a potential chemical plant in the neighborhood.
Well, it is not classified as a chemical plant.
Well, I'm just saying.
All right, I just wanted to clarify that.
I'm just saying, that's my opinion.
Well, and again, it's no, I would say this, you know, it's no different from the natural gas that you may and may have in your homes now. It's just a larger pipe, because we are running larger equipment. So you wouldn't consider your home a chemical plant because natural gas is going there.
So how large is the pipe now? The pipe for the school facility, how large is?
Well, the natural gas, I mean, it's probably going to be an eight-inch diameter pipe? You know, that's the size that's probably, that's needed to feed that. So I just wanted to bring that out, uh, when we say natural gas, just like you have natural gas to your home if you have a, a gas heater or a stove, we're just going to have a larger pipe, natural gas to run the, the turbine itself. And if there's an issue with natural gas, then we go to diesel fuel, so. But again, only if needed, but our primary source will be from Entergy. So they are, that's where we're going to get that power from. That's their bread and butter. They are efficient in generating power. We're going to buy from them, because it's much cheaper for us to buy from them than what we can produce now, and, and we'll go from there. Okay? All right, you want it?
Well, just one last closing comment. Ron, even though Ron was talking about doing another outreach meeting, you know, I wanted to emphasize, at least from Entergy's behalf, there's no reason for you to wait months if you have any questions about this project. If you want to, you're, you'll be able to see construction going on here pretty soon for our piece of it and for Swebno's piece of it. Questions may come up, you know, concerns may come up about noise, uh, somebody may want to know what's next. So, and obviously, there's a lot of people that are here, some of your friends, some of your neighbors that are, have, are interested stakeholders. So don't hesitate to reach out either, either using the Swebno hotline phone number or website or email address, or, you know, if you know it's something specifically you want to ask related to Entergy scope, uh, Bradley's, uh, phone number, uh, is on the, is on, it's on the board and it's also in the, in the handout. So, so don't consider this only a chance to very, very infrequently get information about this. You're welcome to reach out to us at any time. We're happy to answer your questions, meet with you, whatever. I only live a couple of miles from the plant, I'm a Swebno customer. I've lived in Orange Parish for quite a while, so, you know, I'm an interested stakeholder as well. So, uh, you know, we need to, we need to understand, uh, you're going to have concerns as well. So we're happy to answer any questions you have. Thanks.
Thank you, Mario. All right, thank you. And again, thanks everyone for coming out and joining us at, I'm going to say the first community meeting, so we will have one in the future. Again, we'd like to say, enjoy the rest of your night and holidays coming up, Thanksgiving holidays, uh, enjoy your holidays. And one last thing I always do, Ron always does at the meeting, if you're a vet, if you're a vet, raise your hand, uh, always give congratulations to the vet, because that's truly a sacrifice, I'm a vet. And that's truly a sacrifice, not just to the vet themselves, but the families of the vet and the spouses of the vet, it's also a sacrifice that they have to go through for the veterans of these United States. So again, thanks for coming out, enjoy your happy Thanksgiving holidays, and we'll see you again in a couple of months. Bye-bye.